All right, the time is now 3:44 PM. I would like to call to order the meeting of the Committee of the Whole for Tuesday, June 4th, 2024. Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderman Switzer.
Present.
Alderman Oldenburg.
Present.
Alderman Kohn. Alderman Orion.
Here.
Alderman Ballmer. Alderman Valesquez.
Here.
Alderman Sanier.
Present.
Alderman Spencer. Alderman Browning.
Present.
Alderman Clark Hubbard.
Here.
Alderman Keys. Alderman Tyus. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Aldridge.
Present.
President Green.
Present.
Alderman Kohn. Alderman Ballmer. Alderman Spencer. Alderman Keys. Alderman Tyus. Alderman Boyd. Now, in present, you have four.
Thank you, a coram being present. And we will go to our remark from, sorry, we'll go to our remarks from city officials. We are going to hear from the Policy Director, from the President's Office, Christine Garmendia, to present on the public comment we received on the Citizen Lab Portal relating to the topics of today's Committee of the Whole, which will include both the redevelopment revolving loan fund and increasing city worker wages. Ms. Garmendia is on her way, and she'll be walking through these doors shortly. Thank you, Ms. Garmendia. You can turn your mic on. And do we need to, I need to swear you in? Are you fine? Okay. Yep, just press the button, it should go green soon now.
Okay. Hi, everyone. Christina Garmendia, I'm here to give an update on where we are and to introduce kickoff, kick us off for this Committee of the Whole. Next slide. And as been previewed, we'll be exploring a couple of different ideas today, followed with Alderman Q and A. There'll be an opportunity for public comment. And I'm here to give the introduction. So, next slide. That's me. Next slide. Can you advance? One more. As a reminder, the community engagement we've had so far for the RAMS settlement included a kickoff survey that was from open, kickoff survey was open from August to October of 2023, where we asked residents about their challenges. The Ideas Portal, where we were collecting ideas from the community for the RAMS settlement, was open, has, remains open. The priority challenges, we discussed the ideas that were received at the end of last year, and we held a series of a public vote to elevate ideas for funding consideration for hearings such as this one in January and February of this year. And now we're in public hearings, where we're doing a deeper dive into the different ideas that the public has raised up as priorities. And we'll be having those hearings through the summer. Next slide. And as part of these hearings and this process, the Board of Aldermen agreed to hold hearings on some of the top, most popular ideas from residents, including the hearing we had last month on the replacement of water mains, where we heard from our Director of Public Utilities. And today, we'll be hearing about two of the five top ideas. We'll be hearing from our personal director about increasing wages or salaries for city employees, and from the Director of SLDC on the redevelopment revolving loan fund. And just to remind us why we're having hearings on these two ideas today, related to city worker pay. This is an idea that received more than 8,000 votes from residents. And it is a very, the second most popular idea for residents who make less than $50,000. It's the second most popular idea for residents that are under the age of 25. It was the most, second most popular idea for residents of Wards 1, 2, 4, 12, and 13. It was the number three idea for participants over the age of 60, and the number three overall idea for all participants. And the redevelopment revolving loan fund was the number one idea for residents of Wards 10, 11, 12, and 13, so the North Side. The number one idea for Black residents who participated in our survey is supported by more than 50% of Black residents who participated in the survey. It's also a number three for participants who make less than $50,000. Number four idea for residents under 25. But overall, I think it's actually the number six idea for all participants. And just to summarize too, here, the public comment, we had, these ideas were open for public comment for, since, since February. And so just to provide a summary for the public comment that was received. For the worker pay, many, many residents agree that city services would improve if the city was better able to attract and train workers. And there's general agreement that city worker pay is too low. However, there is skepticism that the RAMS settlement can provide sustainable funding for comprehensive salary increases. And residents would also be more comfortable with pay increases if payments were tied to achieving performance goals. And so all the Alders have received in their inbox the collection of comments that were received for each of these ideas. And then for the redevelopment revolving loan fund, residents who supported this idea liked that the funds would be used to support additional financial investment into St. Louis neighborhoods, and that the funds could be recaptured for additional projects. In addition, there is recognition of the need for government intervention to spur redevelopment, specifically of blighted and vacant properties. Criticism around this idea, of this idea, center on the potential for loan default, government corruption, disagreement that city government should provide more than basic services or extend its scope into public bank. Some residents hope that the funds would be available to individual homeowners to invest in home repair, and others towards civic infrastructure such as schools. So, that's a summary of kind of the public feedback we received so far on those two ideas. And with that, next slide. And so these public hearings, as a reminder, are an opportunity to learn more about these priority ideas in terms of their feasibility, their cost, the fiscal impact on the city, their social impact on residents, and the availability of additional funding sources. Next slide. And so we'll kick off with the redevelopment revolving loan fund. And next slide, as a reminder, these are some of the, the questions that our guests will help us begin to answer. What is a redevelopment revolving loan fund? How would it be managed? Who would receive the funds? What are the costs? What are the benefits? And are there any other sources of funding available for setting up such a fund? And then, two more slides, and then I'll be done. I'll turn it over to our guests. And just a reminder, when we think about increasing city worker pay, next slide, there are different ways to increase city worker pay, from increasing wages in terms of salary, performance pay. In other words, I would be phrased in other industries would be bonuses. We don't use that word here. And pensions. And another way to increase city worker pay, in reality, is by decreasing their costs, such as the cost of health insurance, the cost of housing, student loans, or childcare. And next slide. And so we'll be looking forward to hearing from our guests on how feasible any of those options are. Next slide. And just, one of the comments we got a lot was about the compensation study. And so, a short definition of what a classification and compensation study is for folks is, and we're investing one right now as a city. It's a study that looks at internal equity between employees' market competitiveness with external, you know, how well do our jobs compete with others in terms of pay? And then compliance with other federal requirements. And what this compensation study will result in is recommendations for addressing pay gaps and disparities, updating compensation structures, and updating our job descriptions and minimum qualifications. So, this will be updated this year. And there will be recommendations that come out probably in the beginning of next year. But I'll let our, if there's any questions about that, I'll give it to our guests. So with that, I'll close and give it over to our next guest.
Thank you, Director Garmendia. And we will dispense with line item number five, which is our presentation. And we are lucky to have Neil Richardson from the St. Louis Development Corporation today to present to us on the idea of the city having a redevelopment revolving loan fund. And just as a reminder, I would ask that members of the Committee of the Whole hold our question. Thank you, Mr. Richardson.
Thank you, Chairwoman Sanier, and the members of the Committee of the Whole. If it's okay for me to share my screen. We're heading, begin my presentation. So, as Mr. Garmendia spoke to, it is critical for us, as we set this conversation, that this is just for discussion purposes only. And to address any questions or challenges or opportunities that could be presented by the City of St. Louis leveraging funds from the RAMS settlement in order to establish a revolving loan fund. And for the sake of this conversation, I did prepare a memo that we'll share with the clerk, and hopefully with the other members of the committee, and also can be shared with the public. But also, I wanted to ensure that I presented this presentation today that can also be shared with the public. Again, for the conversations for today, the, the overall example is the, what would happen if we were to leverage $20 million from the RAMS settlement funds to establish a $100 million revolving loan fund? Overall, because it is a revolving loan fund, the assumption, as what we see across other similar loan funds that have been established by other cities, is we see an expectation of the funds revolving every five years. So in this scenario, if we're able to leverage $20 million from the RAMS settlement funds with, and coupled in a line that with other philanthropic and private investment, whether that's from traditional financial institutions or impact investors, foundations, as well as CDFIs or certified development financial institutions, we anticipate a $100 million revolving loan fund that can be revolved over every five years. So anticipating an approximate $400 million of total investment specifically from the fund. So that's direct investment from the fund itself. Obviously, there will be other indirect investments that will result as the, these funds will be invested into projects and products that will create jobs and also, also drive economic development activity in traditionally under-invested neighborhoods. But one of the questions that was asked in the initial introduction was, you know, how do we manage the operating and administrative costs? And also have a reserve for potential loan defaults while protecting our investment of the $20 million? And so, in order to achieve that, we are projecting a rate of return on our investments of 2% to 3% per year. We believe that the 2% to 3% per year will, of the $20 million, will ultimately cover those administrative expenses, operating costs, and also set aside a portion of the funds to be reserved for potential loan defaults. So after the, again, 20-year period, which is again, and a, being utilized as a timeline for example purposes and discussion purposes only, we anticipate having enough funds to cover those administrative costs, operating cost reserve, and then also protecting the initial $20 million corpus. The aim for these investments will be focused on development and economic activities within under-invested neighborhoods, as outlined within the Economic Justice Action Plan, which has been supported by the Board of Aldermen, the Mayor's Office, and the Controller's Office, and to provide essential financial assistance to small disadvantaged businesses and nonprofit organizations. So those are really the three key activities that can be supported, I think, as goals of the revolving loan fund, is the redevelopment of properties in our historically under-invested neighborhoods, support for small and disadvantaged businesses and nonprofit organizations, as well as ensuring support for disadvantaged suppliers and contractors. This is just a list of activities that SODC and within other cities, we've seen already be put into productive use. And I will share a couple of examples as I go through the presentation. But there can be other opportunities, such as home repair loans or, or grant opportunities that can go into these developments. But that, those, again, can be discussed at, at another time or during the open discussion portion. As I go to the next slide here, the first key activity is the redevelopment of properties in under-invested neighborhoods and communities. So as we look at a potential allocation of $20 million of the RAMS settlement, a line shared that will go towards redevelopment of properties in our Economic Justice Index areas 1 through 3. And as you can see from the map, that is all of the neighborhoods north of Del Mar, and also all neighborhoods that are within our southeast area. Really being able to close the gap for many of our nonprofit developers, as well as our for-profit diverse developers, who are seeking to drive economic growth and activity in these neighborhoods. What we've recognized at SLDC, through the investments that we've received, whether it's through ARPA, or partnering with private investors or neighborhood organizations, that there is a challenge with access to capital for pre-development, architectural drawings, engineering, renderings, and other mezzanine financing, subordinate debt, to be able to attract other financial, traditional financial investments, or even impact investing. I give an example, one of the projects that we're working on in North St. Louis City has been awarded a grant from the federal government in, in the form of a, a, a grant that's retroactive, so a reimbursable grant. So in order for them to receive the funds, they have to spend it and then earn it back. However, many of the financial institutions that underwrite these transactions are not able to leverage the grant commitments, whether it's from the federal, state, or local level, to actually make a law. And so what we've recognized is many of these projects are being stalled because they're not able to access the pre-development costs. So by being able to really leverage this $10 million of, of RAMS settlement and into the $50 million overall fund, being able to provide the pre-development capital will be able to unlock and unleash significant investment from the private sector into many of these projects that are meeting any of those community priorities. And these investments will provide funds at below-market capital to support projects, but also still have a return to investors. Because once the project is able to secure other financing, they're able to refinance out of many of these initial products, which can then be returned to the revolving loan fund that can be then recirculated out to other projects. The Philadelphia Accelerator Fund is a great example. They are focused primarily on affordable housing and leveraging the vacant property that's within their land bank, and really transitioning that property into economic development and into its highest and best use while ensuring that we're providing access to mid-income projects. And many of these projects are actually led by nonprofits and community development operations within those neighborhoods. While these investments are not long-term investments, they are providing that critical pre-development cost and capital to be able to attract those other investments, to be able to bring these projects to fruition. So as we see North St. Louis City and either even other areas of southeast, why isn't development moving forward? And again, a lot of that is due to the lack of access to this flexible subordinate and pre-development financing that can be offered through this fund. And again, the objective here would be to stimulate economic growth and improve the living conditions in neighborhoods that have been historically underserved and under-invested. The second product, which is one that we've already started to stand up at SODC, and that's the Scale Up STL Program. By leveraging $6 million through the RAMS settlement funds, we're able to attract another $24 million from investors to be able to provide SBA 7A and commercial loan product to qualified borrowers ranging from $10,000 to $5 million. I think the key component here, though, as many small businesses and nonprofits are starting up or even scaling, is not just getting access to capital, but getting access to affordable capital. Many of the smaller businesses have to leverage their personal assets in order to get access to these funds. And as we know, there is a significant wealth gap between households in North City versus those in South City. But then also, our Black and Brown households have 1/10 of the wealth of our average white household. So as we're seeking to be more inclusive and equitable in how we distribute, distribute funds, we want to ensure, one, that we're not just providing access to capital, we're providing access to affordable capital. And through this Scale Up Program in partnership with the St. Louis Community Credit Union, SODC has been able to partner with St. Louis Community Credit Union to offer loans as low as 1.5% below the market rate. So again, it's providing that really competitive capital for those businesses to be successful, facilitating their growth, and ensuring that they're able to sustain and be able to hire also from our community. We also see a, a gap within our, our diversity, within our suppliers. And so we have a focus at SODC to support our women and minority-owned business enterprises through our Economic Empowerment Center in partnership with the airport to support our women and minority business enterprises to get certified, and then also connecting them, whether it's to redevelopment projects within the city that are led by the city, or with other private institutions. Our Anchor Action Network is just one. So we have many large employers that have diversity goals and also are seeking to work with more small businesses that are located within our disadvantaged, under-resourced communities. And so our goal through the Mobilize STL Program is to provide access to capital for our contractors and suppliers, whether they're taking on a large-scale redevelopment project as a subcontractor, or they're a supplier to a major employer. This helps them build capacity by helping them secure supplies, mobilization costs. Also, ensuring that they have the capacity to cover payroll, and ensuring that their employees are getting paid in a timely manner. But then also, ensuring that they're able to compete. They have the appropriate access to capital to now get the, the appropriate licensing, the appropriate binding, the appropriate insurance, so they can compete. I believe this program will ultimately increase the overall capacity for all of St. Louis businesses to thrive, but specifically our women and minority-owned business enterprises to be successful as well, and take advantage of the great opportunities that are being presented through the investment happening within the city. But as I talked about, the overall $100 million fund, the $20 million from the RAMS settlement, I spoke already about the approximate 2% to 3% return, again, generating an estimated gross revenue of $400,000 to $600,000 annually from the interest. And then the return of principal will be reinvested back into projects or products. And that $400,000 to $600,000, again, can go to a loan loss reserve to ensure that as we are expanding the program, we also understand there may be shortcomings. There have to be learning experiences for our developers, for our small businesses and nonprofits, and not to penalize them, but have the appropriate resources that they can get the wraparound services to be successful long-term. And so having that loan loss reserve ensures that, one, we provide affordable cost of capital, but then, two, ensuring that we are able to protect that initial corpus and investment of $20 million. And so we anticipate the total investment from that $20 million as it's being revolved of approximately $70 to $100 million over projected 20-year period. We also have been successful at SODC of aligning ourselves with philanthropic partners. We've partnered with the St. Louis Community Foundation through our Economic Development and Transformation Fund to align and coordinate philanthropic dollars from foundations, individuals, organizations, to help scale up many of our investments that I just outlined in the previous slides. And with the philanthropic grants, there is no expectation of a return on capital or of the capital, but the philanthropic grants will support the funds, extend access to capital, again, at below-market interest rates, and be utilized as a loan loss reserve as well to incentivize investment to historically underserved businesses, developers, and communities. I would say this program, the Economic Development and Transformation Fund, has gone a great interest from the philanthropic community across, not just the St. Louis City, but the entire region. We see that there's a need for grant dollars to go towards economic development activity, because that's how we grow our city's population. That's how we grow our tax base, and overall support the, the, the growth and success of the city of St. Louis. Also, impact investors. So many foundations and other CDFIs have started to lean heavily into the impact investing space. Detroit was really the lead with Dan Gilbert and the Ballmer Foundation on driving impact investing. So not just grant giving, but how do they leverage their empowerment to invest dollars towards economic development activity? And so our goal and our plan through this example would be to continue to engage with those partners, to find those investments, and to attract those investments from those impact dollars towards this effort, seeing, seeing the city being committed to investing into these priorities. Many impact investors follow the city's priorities and goals once that vision is clearly laid out. With the impact investor, their expectation is to realize a below-market rate of return. It's traditionally a little bit higher than just covering operating costs. They do have some additional rate of return that they anticipate of receiving. Their goal is, if they're investing into this, into this project, their foregoing potential investments into other treasury bonds or other financial instruments. So based off of their stewardship, they would like to see some rate of return above just covering operating expenses. But then they also want to see a return of their capital, not just on the capital, but of their capital over an extended period of time. And so again, we project another $70 to $100 million from this fund as well. And then from the traditional financial institutions, this is kind of the traditional investors. But because we are able to leverage and align our public dollars that can be subordinate to these first loans and mortgage investments, but then also leveraging our impact investor dollars and grant dollars, we're able to mitigate a lot of the perceived dollars and grant dollars, we're able to mitigate a lot of the perceived risk that financial institutions have, or able to bring other equity where their investment is really right-sized to not be over-leveraged or above the appraised value or loan-to-value that they would traditionally make in any market, specifically are under-invested and historically underserved markets. So being able to attract investments there is crucial because that's how we sustain this work long-term. And we anticipate through this program or this initiative, being able to attract another $50 million from financial institutions or banking partners into this effort. They will have their traditional rate of returns of, again, 6.25% rate of return to be invested over a seven-year term with the option to extend over the 20-year projected life of the revolving loan fund. Again, that leaves a total investment there of around $200 million. So overall, the goal would be for us to establish a $100 million revolving loan fund day one that would be able to drive a direct investment of $400 million and probably a couple billions of dollars over that from indirect investments that will happen as a result of these initial dollars that are flowing into communities as a result of that initial seed capital of $20 million of the RAM's settlement. Again, this $20 million is just a number that I use as an example. You can extrapolate that lower or higher based on the desire and appetite of this committee, of the public, and of our Board of Estimate and Apportionment. But I just wanted to lay that out as an example of what we could potentially expect from this type of investment. So that's my presentation for today. Chairwoman Sonja, I'll pass it back over to you.
Thank you for that presentation, Mr. Richardson. I saw that Jonathan Ferry was here. So there was a panel discussion last month that was hosted to discuss the idea of a redevelopment loan fund, and Jonathan Ferry was the host of that. I don't know if you wanted to share any remarks, or would you like to just wait until we get to questions? You just come up here and then I'll get you sworn in. Right hand up.
Hey, how's it going, everybody? Good to see you all, some new faces.
And do you promise that what you're about to say is the truth and the whole truth, so help us all?
Sorry, can you say that again?
You're just promising that what you're about to say is the truth and the whole truth, so help us all?
Oh, yeah, mhm, yes.
Thank you.
Sorry, I have bad hearing in big rooms like this.
No worries.
Yeah, so I don't have, I was asked by Christina to come and basically just be available to answer questions, I guess. But so just background, I used to work for SLDC, I'm currently a senior associate for real estate at Washington University. And part of what we worked on whenever I was here was the Equitable Strategic Framework, Economic Development Framework. And part of that was, within there, we talked about the idea of creating this revolving loan type of structure. There are numerous ways to put these kind of programs together, as you know, you just heard from Neil. I think one of the big takeaways, honestly, is that what a revolving loan program does, instead of thinking of it as like a tool where like you're putting part of the money, you know, RAM settlement money into a bucket, and then it can't be used for other things, it's really more of a tool to magnify the amount of impact you can get from the RAM Settlement Fund, whether or not you're going to use it for, you know, economic development directly, or you could use it for other things that are, you know, currently being considered, such as water infrastructure, for example. I think one of the most powerful examples across the United States of a good revolving loan program that has been successfully executed is the city of Cincinnati has an organization called 3CDC. It's the Cincinnati City Center Development Corporation. And they started about 20 years ago, actually exactly 20 years ago in 2004, with a seed fund of about $150 million. That amount, I believe, came from mostly private sources, but there's a mix of public as well, I think. But anyway, in 20 years, they have been able to recycle that $150 million four times into $600 million of total investments, which have resulted in $1.7 billion of total development just in their, over the Rhine District and downtown areas. That kind of impact, just in terms of economic growth, the amount of additional tax revenue that's being generated is, you know, hard to overstate. So, yeah, I mean, I'm happy to answer any questions, you know. I could provide other examples of ways you can use a revolving loan fund. Just one last quick one, the city of Dallas had a really, I think, innovative approach with how they use their fund. They essentially prefunded all of their other tax incentive programs, such as TIF districts. So instead of having to go out and finance those TIF districts, and then essentially over 50% of the money that actually is collected by the districts ends up going to pay interest, the city would collect that interest. And you could look at the most recent CAFR of the city to see that the city is spending tens, if not hundreds, of millions of dollars over the next 20 years, just in interest on those TIF notes. So that's another way that the city could use a revolving loan tool to save itself a lot of money and make a lot of impact.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ferry, for joining us. We're going to do questions, but we have one more presentation, so if you want to stick around and take questions, we're going to let the next presenter go. Thank you. And for our next guest speaker, we will have Director Gray. We are all very familiar with her. One of the topics that came up was obviously a city worker compensation, and so we wanted to make sure that we had that conversation based in reality. And so Director Gray is going to talk to us about some of the ways of which we could do this in a sustainable way, and also some of the ways, some of the ideas that may not actually be realistic and sustainable, given that this is a one-source, one-time fund.
Thank you. Good afternoon, President Green, Chairwoman Sonja, and all of the older people. Thank you for having us here. I have with me this afternoon Deputy Director John Unnerstall, who is over classification and compensation, and Alonzo Williams, who is the manager of classification and compensation. And they are here for support or any additional questions or any other ideas that may be generated. So I would like to say that you are correct with regards to impacting employee-based salaries, that we have to look at options that would support those increases on a recurring basis. And I'm not sure whether or not the funds here would be able to do that, but we can have questions and answers around that. So we do have some ideas that have been generated from Alonzo Williams, the work that he has put into this that I would like to share with the board as a whole. So of course, one of the options, this has already been done several years or so ago. And so if you begin to think about employee salaries and not impacting it from a base compensation standpoint, doing a one-time bonus or payout similar to what was done several years ago is an option. But understanding that, the impact that that had to the city overall a couple of years ago was $18 million, and I was able to confirm that number. Also, as mentioned by Director Garmedia, is that, you know, when you begin to look at the cost of employee benefits, they're continually going up every year. I think we're going to, we're looking at probably a 4% increase this year that's being carried over to the employee. And so anything that can be done to potentially reduce those premiums for employees would be a very positive thing to do. Employee recognition programs, because we don't do a lot in the city as a whole to recognize employees. I believe that departments, they actually do this independently as an operating department, but there is nothing that is done on a citywide basis. We have employees that have worked for this, some close to 50 years. And it would be very nice for someone that has worked for the city for 50 years or 40 years, that when they do leave, that there is some type of gift that is given to them, you know, as they retire or as they leave the city, just recognition around employees when they've made one year or five years or 10 years or 20 years. Those are milestones for some. And to be quite honest, unheard of in today's workplace that employees can, that will work for an organization that long. And so where we do have that, having some type of program that could be funded to be able to take care of that. One idea that came up from Alonzo Williams, and I broached this with other members of the HR team, employees have to pay for parking. And a lot of times, for retention purposes or trying to attract candidates to come work for the city, and they find that a portion of their salary has to also be used towards paying for parking. And so we have a municipal garage. And so can employees be assigned a parking space and those expenses be covered? That would be a great perk or benefit working for the city of St. Louis. Our employees work very, very hard. We do have fitness centers in some of our buildings. We have them in the Carnehan Building. We would love to put one here in City Hall if you give us the space, but we have them over at 1520. It would be nice to be able to fund fitness centers, relaxation rooms in the operating departments, and to cover those expenses for employees. It was mentioned again, and President Green, I recall when she took office, that we were looking at the ideas around childcare, childcare vouchers. That's very legitimate and would be a definite incentive for employees that work for the city and to entice them to come and work for the city. A cafeteria on-site. I believe that we used to have one, I think, in City Hall maybe some years ago, but employees that, you know, right now, they have to leave the work area to go and get something to eat for lunch, sometimes after work for dinner. But it would be nice if we had something where employees could have a place to go and get a healthy meal. This is a big one for me, and I've made some improvements in the Department of Personnel. But if you go into many of our operating departments or their offices, there are employees that have broken chairs, furniture is very old and outdated, and you think about the amount of time that employees will spend at work, they want to be in an uncomfortable environment or be able to, you know, sit at a desk where the drawer is open or there's not a drawer falling off. So some investment around furniture, chairs, equipment that employees need because it's very outdated in many, many, many departments. One of the things that was this, ideas that was presented was a resource center for employees to be able to continue to improve their skills that are in their operating departments. That would include computers, it could include training, research, books, you know, things of that nature to help improve the employee experience. One of the things that's on my to-do list as soon as I can get funding for it is to have a swag store where employees can feel proud about working for the city of St. Louis. They can buy shirts or jackets or hats or mugs or cups or things like that that are branded from the city. So those are some general ideas that we were tossing around and came up with. We don't necessarily have the actual cost for these because we didn't go into that level of detail. The other thing with the classification and compensation study that has already launched, we believe that as a result of that study, that we would have relative data that can support any suggestions concerning a potential salary increase for employees. Right now, we just don't have the data to support what that may look like or what that should be. So that's what we have from the Department of Personnel with regards to ideas recommendation.
Thank you, Director Gray. I actually think that was very, very helpful, and thank you for reminding us all of that compensation study that is ongoing.
Okay.
I'm going to go ahead and switch some things around and move us to line item number eight, and that would be Board of Alderman Discussion, and we will go in order of seniority. Started with who's present, I think that would be Alderman Odenberg.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Thank you for the time. I just have a few statements around what I heard are really good ideas from Director Richardson and Mr. Ferry, that, you know, the idea that we think larger than one-time money, that we think through a revolving, a few funds, that really do have the ability to leverage up hundreds of millions of more dollars and invest in our community in the corners of our city that have been underserved and disinvested. That is at the heart of community development, community development financing. And I love the models that were invoked and the examples. 3CDC is wildly successful in Cincinnati. I've worked personally with them for 15 or 20 years on all the investments that they're making. So that, to me, is a transformative and an investment that can be made, not so much one-time for dollars, not that you shouldn't have the flexibility to do that in some circumstances. It sounds like this revolving fund can do that with the overall intention to continue to leverage up more community and development finance dollars to really make the impact that we've discussed for 50 years down here at the city. And we've got the plans as well with the Economic Justice Plan and Strategy to implement. So I think, I think I've been encouraging this, and I'm not alone, this is not profound, but I've been encouraging this type of a use for these monies over and over again. So I appreciate the presentation. I think it's, there's a lot of work that's gone into it, and it can truly be transformative in many natures. I would also consider it potentially a side-by-side model that could also invoke and invest in for-sale housing. We have great partners here that do that. I think, as you guys all know, building wealth and building wealth where there's been a racial wealth gap is incredibly important asset, and no better than a home to be that largest asset to grow wealth for our Black and Brown communities in St. Louis. I think that also should be an encouragement and would love to work with SLBC and others on a similar model that can help with, again, first-time home, coming up with the down payment for first-time home buyers, can also help leverage up the other entities that are doing this, building for-sale housing throughout our city and doing it in intentional areas that we know will have a lasting impact. So, you know, kudos to SLBC and that proposal. I also don't want the Personnel Division to feel slighted here. I think there's some good-natured ideas there where we can help our employees, you know, beyond just giving our city employees, you know, an invisible hug, ensuring that they have amenities that are in the 21st century of other employees, so that we can keep them is also worth the merit and discussion. So that's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Alderman Kohn, I didn't see you on the call, but also, Mr. Richardson, anyone you want to respond to, just raise your hand so I can know that you want to respond. You can respond as we go, or you can respond at the end, whatever you'd like.
No, thank you, Chairwoman Sonja. Again, I want to thank Alderman Odenberg for his comments. And again, we've worked together with 3CDC in the past, and I recently met with their founding director and president from Cincinnati, came down to St. Louis to actually meet with us and talk through the structure that they established and taken on some very difficult to-develop buildings. I think one of the direct comments that he made to me was, buildings like the Millennium Hotel, Railway Exchange, AT&amp;T, is something that 3CDC just took on because the civic community, the city, said, we need to do this, and they have the resources behind them through that fund that was already established to take on those properties. So when a problem... So when a problem was identified, they had a solution-oriented, um, developer that was ready to execute. And I think the revolving loan fund to that point allows us to be more proactive to address these concerns, uh, rather than having to, uh, appropriate other dollars. Uh, we can really leverage these funds and be more proactive and even react to address some of the, um, concerns around implementation and, um, other redevelopment activity across the entire city, but specifically in our economic justice index areas, one through three. So this is the only response to Alderman Odenberg, but thanks for your comments.
Thank you, Alderman Cohen. I'm sorry that I didn't see that you were present there, but the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I actually agree with my colleague from the second on, you know, his comments and remarks and suggestions. And, um, I would, you know, add, uh, just from a, a personnel perspective. Uh, one, I hope the compensation study is also including, um, kind of total compensation packages as a whole, not just base salary, because the city does actually have, uh, fairly generous benefit programs in comparison to private employers, um, not exclusively health and welfare benefits, but also our, you know, time off and our, um, you know, pensions certainly are a wonderful benefit that the city offers, uh, that aren't normally factored into, um, compensation, uh, across the board from a base salary perspective. But I thought that, uh, excuse me, the director had a, a lot of, um, kind of low-hanging fruit actually that we can try and address through these funds as well that, uh, would be happy to look at and review and, um, you know, uh, when we're going through the recommendation process for these funds.
Excellent. Thank you. Uh, do you want to, you can anytime you want to respond. It looks like Director Gray has something she'd like to add.
Um, Alderman Cohen, uh, just to address, um, the issues that you brought up concerning the classification and compensation study, it is not only looking at, uh, just base compensation. It is taking a look at our classification structure. As I communicated this morning in our, in, in my budget hearing meeting, uh, currently the city of St. Louis has 620 classifications. That's a lot for, um, the city of our size. And so they will be taking a look at that, you know, as well as the minimum qualifications, et cetera. But in the current scope of work, it does not take, it is not taking a look at, um, total compensation with regards to our vacation packages, benefits and those types of things, but that's a very good point. And I will bring it up to the consultants within our, uh, next meeting to see if that is something, a scope of work and that, that can be added.
I think that that would be helpful. Thank you, Director. Uh, you know, I think when we look at just the fringe benefit cost for our, our employees versus a, a private sector employee, you know, there's probably a noticeable difference there given the, um, breadth and depth of our benefit package, uh, that we offer for our employees. So thank you. I appreciate you. Um, bring that to the consultant's attention and then also, um, the other suggestions and recommendations that you made.
Thank you, Alderman Orion of the Fourth Ward.
Thank you, uh, Chairwoman Sonier, and I, I want to thank SLDC and, uh, um, Dr. Gray for, um, coming before us today and, and addressing these. Um, I, I, I don't think that, uh, it's a secret what I'm gonna say. I've been screaming it from the rooftops. Uh, we've had, over the last five years, not even five years, we've had two once-in-a-lifetime opportunities to, uh, reinvest in our city, and it, it just seems to me like we're gonna blow it twice. Uh, the reason that we're not seeing investment in our city is because we can't get basic city services done. And the reason that we can't get basic city services done is because we don't have adequate staffing. Um, you know, the, it was brought up that employees have to pay for parking. Employees have to pay for parking because the city requires it. The city owns those lots. The city doesn't have to charge employees to, to, to park there. It chooses to. Uh, I know that members of the Board of Aldermen don't pay for parking. Um, I think if we even get just a little bit creative here, we can, we can come up with some serious solutions. In, in, in 2023, college endowments, the average return on a college endowment was 7.7% after fees. At the, the $250 million we have in, that's $19 million a year without touching the principal. That would go a very long way when we're looking at hiring on and maintaining refuse drivers, streets, uh, department employees, water division employees, police officers, firefighters, NIS is on and on down the line. And the, it, that addresses every other issue that, that, that we're getting to. The, the entire issue is manpower and our inability to keep the manpower that we need to get things done to make people want to move here and stay here. And, uh, I, I'll be damned if, if we're not gonna blow it twice. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Orion. Hopefully the topics of today make you feel like we won't blow it twice. But do appreciate the honest commentary, per usual. Um, Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
No, I don't have any additional questions or comments. Just thank you for these very thorough presentations and the background information, Mr. Ferry, you know, is always welcome from your expertise. And I look forward to hearing from the public.
Excellent. Thank you. Um, I don't, is Alderman Velasquez online?
Yeah.
Thank you. Floor is yours, Alderwoman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, just a quick question for Mr. Richardson. If I'm understanding correctly, is your proposal to take the 20 million from the Rams settlement? Or is it to do, or, and fundraise the other 80 million? Did I miss?
Yeah, it would, it would, it would be able to attract the other 80 million dollars to, um, be able to leverage into those various activities that are outlined for that one example. Again, it can go into many different activities and activations, but the, the 20 million dollars, again, being able to align that with other philanthropic and other, uh, impact investment as well as, uh, traditional investment capital is, is possible. Um, yes.
And I know we're speaking in hypotheticals here, but you feel confident that if we did something like this, that we could fundraise that additional 80,000, I'm sorry.
Eighty, yeah, yes. Yeah, so we've seen, uh, success with our other program. I would just give an example of the, um, Scale Up STL program that I put out as an example. It was a $2 million investment, um, and we actually seen 12, $2 million of ARPA, and we've actually seen a $12 million investment from impact investors into partnership with the St. Louis Community Credit Union. Um, so as we continue to attract other investments, we already have the vehicles in place, uh, to move those things forward. So that's why I wanted to share a couple of examples of things that we're already doing to attract and leverage funds and not just think hypothetically of how it could be possible, but talk about ways of exactly how we're doing that right now. Well, that's ARPA dollars, yeah.
That's great. And I, um, you know, just to, I wanna echo Alderman Orion's comments. I think we can get creative, and I feel like this is if we, you know, I think it is important to use the interest. In a way, I mean, 20 million dollars would be a portion of, I mean, if you think about it like that, that we could do both, right? There could be a way to supplement what we're talking about with salaries and city services and still do something like this if we're not asking for the whole pie, so.
Yeah, agree, agreed. I, I would say, again, I'm just throwing this out as an example purposes, right? But I think it would be upon the determination of the committee, of the public, of E and A ultimately to allocate the award, the dollars as they see fit. Um, we have billions of dollars of challenges, obviously, of economic development, uh, opportunity that can be unlocked. And I think one of the areas that I didn't go too deep on, uh, today was being able to convert many of these historically vacant and dilapidated structures, um, into actually tax, uh, producing assets is also a return on investment for the city as well. So, I mean, we'll see a, a, a return on the direct investment, but also we'll see a return on investment into our tax base and hopefully, uh, growing our city's population is the goal as well.
Great. Thank you. And Madam Chair, I have no other questions.
Thank you, Alderman Velasquez. Great questions. Alderman Browning.
Uh, thank you, and thank you to, uh, Director Richardson and Director Gray, uh, for your testimonies today. Um, I think as we're having these conversations, we're realizing that the Rams settlement money is not a lot of money in the long term. And so I'm very interested in ideas that look to stretch that out or supplement it in a way that makes it have a larger impact. Um, I'll add on to the frustrations of the Aldermen from the Fourth, uh, about how we treat our city workers and their ability to stick around. Um, I think the parking situation could be solved tomorrow. Uh, that maybe we should talk with the Parking Division about that. Uh, but, you know, other things like fixing our city buildings, those are long-term investments to make sure that people are working in, uh, adequate spaces so that they feel like they're actually valued here at the city. But the long-term way of providing, say, better benefit packages or higher pay in a sustainable way over the long term would be to grow our tax base. And we don't grow our tax base unless we grow our population. Uh, so the revolving loan fund, uh, is very appealing to me, and I'd second what the Alderwoman from the Second said, uh, about creating, you know, um, for-sale housing. I, I'd also ask if there's a possibility to, uh, partner with the existing Healthy Home Repair Program and, uh, fund requests in EGI one through three areas. Um, you know, ground-up construction is expensive and large projects are limited to large firms. But if the community is to benefit from this, the programs need to be tailored to be within their reach. And I think that building with the community and not just for the community is a way that we can have a healthy mix of both new development, uh, and, uh, making sure that we're retaining the population we do have. But ultimately, a lot of this needs to be, um, really geared towards growing our tax base because that's the way that we'll be able to treat our employees better in a long-term and sustainable way. Um, and I think that there's this excellent opportunity, especially with just a little seed money, to be able to do something like that. It's a, it's a very appealing idea. Um, but, uh, that's, that's the extent of my comments. I just, uh, I really think that today's been a very educational, um, a few educational presentations and really appreciate, uh, everyone's time today.
Thank you, Alderman Browning. Alderman, oh, sorry, uh, Director Richardson or President Richardson, did you have a response?
No. Yeah, I, I want to appreciate, uh, Alderman Browning's comments. Um, and just wanted to follow up as it relates to hu- healthy home repair, um, programs is definitely as we have grant proceeds that are going to support, uh, many of our low-income income, uh, residents as well as elders in the, the city to ensure that they're able to stay in place as other economic development activity happens, um, across the city itself. Uh, but also recognizing that the he- Healthy Home Repair Program is not able to meet all the needs of those, uh, current residents, and so having another financial instrument to be able to work alongside, uh, that, uh, those investments into the Healthy Home Repair, because sometimes if, uh, someone's ch- challenged with the, with the roof or with, um, tuck pointing, they also have issues with windows or they need other, uh, investments that, you know, maybe the Healthy Home Repair Program cannot stretch and reach at this full as extent and being able to bring other proceeds to help really establish, um, a, a strong asset, um, and, and home for our residents is important and can be made possible through this program, to, through the loan fund.
Thank you, President Richardson. Alderman Aldridge of the Fourteenth Ward.
Thank you, Madam Chair, uh, members of the committee. Uh, first, I just want to say to President Richardson and Director Gray, thank you for being here. I know Director Gray, you've been at the Board of Alderman all day. You presented in budget, uh, today and back again talking about, uh, city employees, so thank you. Uh, not much comments. I just think today was very informative. I agree with Alderman from the Second Ward. You know, this, uh, revolving loan is something that I didn't know about, but it sounds like it can have a huge impact, especially when we're talking about, you know, investing in areas that we haven't invested in a very long time. It is critical that we, you know, invest in downtown and Central West End, but we also want to keep people that have, uh, you know, left this, uh, city, uh, either due to population just for like their neighborhood hasn't been invested in. So this, uh, loan fund is very interesting. Looking forward to learning, uh, more about it. And, uh, Director Gray, thank you for providing information on ways that we can keep city employees, you know, my, my fear with. Um, and you brought up some good ideas of using Rams settlement for, you know, we can't fill our budget with that one time, but, you know, you brought up some very good ideas of maybe a bonus or just small things that we can do to make employees feel appreciated. So, um, thank you both for being here. I think very good information that, uh, hopefully this board can move forward with.
Thank you, Alderman Aldridge, and Madam President Green.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman, and thank you, Director Gray and Director Richardson for being here today. I have just a, a couple of questions, mostly for Director Richardson. So I'm really intrigued by this revolving loan fund idea. Um, as you know, one of the, the things that we continue to be critiqued on the most at the Board of Aldermen is our use of tax incentives, um, and kind of the impact on public schools. And so I'm curious about the ability for such a phone to be able, or fund to be able to be used as like gap financing, um, that is paid back at, uh, you know, a low interest level, probably lower than what a traditional bank would charge to provide that gap financing so that it negates the need for those tax incentives, so that those taxes would go directly to the local district and, and whatever. Is, is that a possibility for how we could use these funds?
Most definitely. And I, I think even with tax incentives, um, again, the tax incentive overall, the abatement specifically in Chapter 99, which we traditionally use, is to help offset the operating costs, um, or the additional costs associated with financing, right? So right now with interest rates being so high, um, historically, compared to historical, um, interest rates, that projects even with tax abatement still are not pencil or is not financially feasible. Um, and so if we're able to offer alternatives such as, uh, lower-cost financing, not only does it make us, um, you know, it, it provides tax dollars immediately to our tax base, but it also, um, allows for, um, us to be more competitive as a city. So if you are a developer looking to develop a property and outside of the city or outside of the region altogether, the developer or the employer is looking at, um, the overall operating costs that they have to cover, and they calculate the financing costs associated with that. So if we're able to be more competitive by offering other gap financing or lower-cost capital, that will allow us to win those projects and see projects get across the, the finish line and actually get under construction and develop. Another way in which, um, uh, Philadelphia is leveraging their revolving loan fund is to, uh, bring other community benefits to projects. So as we have our community benefit scorecard, we are seeking to have, you know, developers include affordability of housing, um, whether it's from 0 to 30%, uh, 30 to 60% or 60 to 80% or even workforce housing at 80 to 120%. Those projects and those units, it costs the same amount to develop an affordable unit as it does to, uh, develop the market rate unit. However, if we're able to bring more creative financing to the table, lower-cost capital to incentivize developers to actually put development, uh, low-income housing units or, uh, workforce housing units within their project, uh, they are, they would be more willing to do so if we had these financing options opposed to just offering them a tax incentive. So I would say the cost of the capital in many ways is more beneficial than the actual tax abatement or tax incentive in many of the scenarios in which we're running it, SLBC, to determine if a project is a go or no go.
You, uh, took kind of the words out of my mouth for my next question and thinking how this could possibly be applied to Lytech eligible projects. I'll put them that way because every year we continue to have, you know, a list of really great Lytech eligible projects that submit for tax credits and a fraction of them actually get awarded. And projects are having to wait, you know, two, three, four years and apply multiple times before they actually get those credits. And without those credits, it's, it's next to impossible to develop affordable housing at this. And without those credits, it's next to impossible to develop affordable housing at the scale that we need to. And so I also see kind of possibility for this in terms of perhaps being that gap financing for Lytech projects if they don't get it on the first round or whatever so that we're not, they're not having to wait three years and hold the property for three or four years before they know if they can actually move forward.
That's correct. And I also would like to add another, because I come from the tax credit world and there's a lot of fees associated with these projects when you're using tax credits, whether it's low-income housing tax credits, historic tax credits, new market tax credits, because you have to leverage experts that really understand how to handle the applications, the compliance, the legal components of this. But with a, having financing options already in place to help these developers leverage these resources, it reduces their overall cost to the project. So that allows them to, one, develop these units and, two, be more competitive when they apply for those Lytech applications or other historic tax credit applications that allows their project to move forward. They won't have to rely as heavily on those incentives. Those incentives are definitely important. But if we're able to offer a alternative or a supplement to those opportunities, we will see more production around the affordable housing. And I think we will also see a shift in the willingness for developers to actually incorporate low-to-moderate income housing and workforce housing into their actual projects because it's helping support the bottom line of their financial statement and impact of the project itself.
And then my last question is, your analysis was with 20 million from RAM's money. Is that really enough?
No, I would say no. Again, that was just an example that I threw out there. Billions, you know, of these $100 billion worth of investment that's necessary for just North City. And then we have some very challenging assets in Southeast City. I seen Alderman Cohn on the call. Him and I have been discussing Cleveland High School in partnership with SLPS to think through how we solve that challenge because that property is an important asset to that community. And without having creative financing and innovative financing options available, projects such as Cleveland High School will continue to sit vacant. I mean, that project alone could, you know, eat up $100 million itself. So I would say that's just, again, for example, an illustration purposes, but the need is great.
Do, as you've talked with private funders, I mean, do you sense that there is an appetite if we were to put a certain percentage of funds into a revolving loan fund that that could be matched at like a 2 to 1, 4 to 1, whatever level so that we're ultimately growing that fund to something that's much bigger to sustain a larger volume of projects?
Yeah, and I was very conservative, again, with the approach that I took in the presentation. Again, just not trying to set unrealistic expectations for this committee here. But traditionally, you see a 5 to 1 investment from the traditional financial market, and that's not even thinking through the impact investors. So in some cases, we can see, you know, a 6, 7x investment coming from the private sector in some of these opportunities. I think the benefit that comes from our investment, and that's why I talked about it in a kind of subordinate manner, is many of the traditional financial institutions, they have Community Reinvestment Act requirements that they have to invest in, you know, low-income housing projects or projects that are in low-income, low-to-moderate income communities. And so they want to make these investments, but it's challenging for them, especially with the financial markets the way that they are, is getting, you know, underwriting these deals and meeting their regulatory requirements as a financial institution. But if you have dollars coming in from the public sector to help offset some of that risk, they're more than willing. There's a strong appetite for them to make that investment. And so being able to stimulate and attract other dollars, I don't think will be a challenge. It's just ensuring that we have the right structures in place and the partnerships in place to align it toward the investments that we care about as a city. And then bringing them along the way of showing how they can meet their CRA goals as well as their other financial goals. Because over time, we hope that the financial markets take over and that our public dollars can go towards other efforts outside of just real estate development, yes, supporting small business, supporting other infrastructure needs that we have. But we need to make that strategic investment now or we'll have to continue to make small drops that we are not able to see that substantial or significant impact in a meaningful way.
Okay, one last question. Do you have any analysis or is it possible to do any kind of analysis that could show sort of impact on tax base? So, you know, for every dollar or something that we invested in a revolving loan fund, what does that look like in terms of additional tax revenue to the city? Because I'm trying to actually tie this back to, you know, worker pay and benefits in some ways. If we're growing our tax base, then we're growing the ability to pay city workers more. But what is that, what does that look like in terms of increased tax revenue and increased potential population growth for our city?
Yeah, so again, we've done some small analyses, samples around some of our LRA properties. For example, we estimate on average, you know, $200,000 of an assessed value of a residential property. How much would that generate in overall, you know, taxes per year to the tax base? You're looking at between $1,200 to $1,600. And then you extrapolate that over, you know, our 10,000 parcels that we have. I mean, those are hundreds of millions of dollars, even billion dollars that we could generate in, you know, in that scenario. But we can definitely run that for you all and have our financial advisors and fund managers to help us identify what that financial return could look like from $1 of investment from the revolving loan fund towards our, what does that yield towards our tax base?
Great. Thank you. No further questions.
Thank you, President Green. I just want to thank all of, you know, both President Richardson and Director Gray for coming to us today, all of the elders who were present for our hearing today. I know it's a very busy time with us as we approached the session, but I'm so glad the majority of you are able to take it. I don't want to reiterate anything that's really been said. I really agree with both the Alderman from the 2nd and the Alderman from the, really agree with everyone's comments about the redevelopment fund idea and just the importance of ensuring that these dollars can yield more dollars rather than, you know, just one-time investment. And I also really appreciate the intentional effort that Director Gray and her team put into, you know, putting together some specific ideas because I think the goal of both of these conversations, for having them on the agenda, was to get us to think in a realistic sense. What are these ideas? How can we support employees? How can we grow our city? How can we revitalize our city? And I think you guys did an excellent job at just showing the interconnectedness of them. President Green, so my question, I would also like that analysis that shows for every dollar invested, what that yields. I think that will help us to get, you know, that will help us with the public. I think that will help us just kind of with the narrative and with all of our colleagues to kind of see why something like that could be a good idea. The only other thing I wanted to share is that Treasurer Lane also did say he's open to conversations as far as talking about if Alderman Ryan is still on so that you don't have to be, see it twice. He said he is open to conversations about the parking benefit that we have for employees because I would have questions, you know, what does that yield for our city? How much does that make, especially in light of the earnings tax decision? I just think it would be important to include him on those conversations and he's watching and actively involved. So that would be the only thing that I would raise is that he's interested in that conversation, but definitely would encourage, you know, if us, any one of my colleagues were interested in that, go get the numbers and just have some data and walk out what that might look like from that standpoint. And with that, we will go to public comments. I don't think there's anyone in the room that was signed up to testify, but there are two folks who are online who would like to testify, so we will shift gears to those folks. And I just ask that when you testify, I'm going to get you sworn in. But please just say your name, say your ward number, and then you will have three minutes for whatever it is that you would like to say. And thank you for joining us today.
The first person's name is Diane. Diane declined, so we'll go to the initial is KMG. All right. Okay, we do have a third person, Chairwoman. The person is Carol Bradford.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, but we can't see you. Is your camera on?
Okay, can you see me?
Yes, we can now.
Okay, and Diane is actually next to me and she, she's just having some issues with her video. So you can, I can pass the phone or my computer to her if you'd like after I speak.
That's fine.
Okay.
All right, so I'm going to get you sworn in first.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Do you promise that what you're about to state is the truth, the whole truth, so help us all?
Yeah.
Excellent. You may proceed. Just remember your name and your ward.
My name's Kelly Foreman and I work in the city. I don't live in the city.
Okay, you can proceed.
Okay, if, I wanted to say that if we want to see improvements in our city, we need to invest in the people and workers who make our city what it is. That is why it is crucial that the funds be used to secure, retain, and reward quality employees. If we develop programs and provide services but have a revolving door of low-quality workers, the programs and services won't work. For example, we cherish our parks and continue to log Forest Park, but we aren't even fairly compensating parks employees or filling parks positions. That's just an example of one of the various departments that I think are underfunded and underpaid. To have the best and move our city forward, we need to invest in our workers. Otherwise, our city will continue to be less than desirable and our tax base will continue to diminish.
Thank you for that.
Diane, do you want to speak? Do you want to speak?
Hi Diane, do you promise that what you're about to say is the truth, the whole, and the whole truth, so help us all?
I do.
Thank you. You may proceed. Just state your name and your ward number or your relationship to the city.
I'm drawing a blank on my ward number, but I'm down the street from Sublet Park.
Excellent. You may proceed.
I'm probably going to be echoing a lot of what Alderman Brett said. I have listened to you all day today and we're discussing all this RAM settlement money and it's a great concern, but after all of this talk and suggestions, there's no resolve. And that is very disappointing. Right now, I see city workers that, we're talking about salaries, but that's all we're doing. I don't see any action being taken. We just keep talking. We talk about city equipment. Our trash trucks are falling apart. You take Highway 40 and you see a greenhouse with glass roof falling apart. What does that say to anybody in our, driving through our city? How many water lines are going to bust before we take action? We keep talking about it, talking, talking. Talking's not getting anything done. We're talking about schools. You talked about Cleveland High School. Do you know how long Cleveland has been empty and we're still talking about it? Oh my gosh. Come on, city. We have to get going. There was an editorial comment in today's paper and talking about Wash U and St. Louis University getting all our tax services and they're a non-for-profit. Do they pay lieu, I mean, do they pay pilot, its payment in lieu of taxes? If so, maybe it's time to address that and get an increase. If not, shame on us because in the meantime, that's a burden on all of our city residents to pay for them to receive these benefits. They're getting trash pickup. They're getting water. They're getting road service. They're getting police and fire services. It's something I want you to look at, not just talk about. Let's take action. I appreciate everything the board's done. I didn't see the mayor today. But, you know, we voted you in to take action. I don't see action. We're talking about a tax base. Well, you know what, for the population, if we just keep talking, we're going to see more for-sale signs going up and that tax base is departing. So please, let's do something. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Carol Bradford.
Hi, my name is Carol Bradford and I want to defer to my husband, Tom, who's sitting here.
Sure.
Thank you, Tom. Do you promise that what you're about to say is the truth and the whole truth, so help us all?
I do.
Thank you. You may proceed. Just your name, ward number, relationship to the city.
Tom Bradford and we're in Alderman Browning's Ward. I think it's the 9th. We used to be the 18th. And I just, I really want to acknowledge the whole board, especially those that have spoken today. I really feel like we're, we're, this has taken a while, but I feel like we're really getting around to a comprehensive approach here. And we have a couple of projects that are, that are ready to go that I think can, can fit into what's, what's evolving here. And I, I think President Green has a really great question when she said, what's the impact on the tax base? So we're going to work up our projects based on the impact on the tax base and, and work with, with all of you on how we can get these, these long-awaited community-based projects underway and making a difference in the city with, with jobs and housing. Thank you so much for all your work.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Andrew.
Andrew, do you promise that what you're about to say is the truth and nothing but the truth, so help us all?
I do.
Thank you. You may proceed. Your name and ward number, please.
My name's Andrew Smurker. I live in Ward 10. I've been in close contact with you guys about advocating for the water infrastructure repair. And I really appreciated the presentations today. They were very educational. But the first thing that I'll say is that the water infrastructure is the only project proposal that I've seen where it actually does have a revenue stream to replace the money that's allocated because we all do pay our water bill. So there's the opportunity to still expand the water infrastructure without the increase proposed, the 40% increase in the water bill, and I think that we should follow that. With regards to the revolving loan fund, I really like that idea as well. But when you weigh the two against each other, okay, you have a $20 million investment at the idea that it will yield more money versus a $130 million investment where all of that money can be replaced by the water bill. And I just want to point out the contrast of those two issues because I would like to see everything get rebuilt. I would like to see everything get expanded. I would like to see city employees get really nice pay packages and all that sort of stuff. But when I have to choose, I still choose the water infrastructure. And what I'll point out- And what I'll point out is that just the other day in Atlanta, there were three major water main breaks. And there was a boil water, you know, advisory, water stopped flowing to businesses, water stopped flowing to households. And I just want to use that as an example to really reiterate that water is underneath everything. It's underneath the roads that we're trying to repair. It's underneath the communities, whether it's, you know, everybody's, a couple of folks are talking about, you know, a childcare program, you know, children benefit from water, parents benefit from water, and people who don't have children benefit from water. Water is the only one that I've seen that's going to benefit every cohort and every constituency that's advocating for something. And even though I really enjoyed the presentations today and did find them educational, I still find that to be the case. So I'm still advocating for water, at least as a first priority. And I'll say that I really don't think that all the different issues are really competing all that much. There was a $20 million proposal today. And at the water meeting, it was, if we did everything, it would be $130 million. So that's 150 million out of 270 million. So that's, it's just over 50% of the budget. Now, again, like I'm saying, if we spend it on water and just commit to repairing the water infrastructure, those dollars will be replaced by the water bill. So those dollars come back to the city, and we can still do some of the other programs that we want. One does not exclude the other. And I think, in conclusion, I, I think, actually, I've really said everything that I really wanted to say. You know, I don't want St. Louis to wind up like Flint. I don't want St. Louis to be in the spot that Atlanta's in right now. I want everybody to be able to have affordable, clean drinking water and, and it be delivered to the entire city. Also, at the last meeting, someone brought up that there's flat fees for some of the neighborhoods, or maybe it's for the entire city, for water. I do think if we wanted to switch to water meters, we could still do that. There's, there's money in the budget to do that. So anyway, I, I think I'll just continue to keep advocating to prioritize the water. And thank you so much to the board for giving me some time to speak.
Thank you, Andrew. All right, that concludes our public comments. Any, if, you, can you sign in? That's okay, there's a form over there. If you want to, you want to talk, you can come up to the mic right here. Do you affirm that what you're about to say is the truth and the whole truth, so help us all?
I do.
Thank you, and your name and ward number.
My name is Bob DiGillo. I'm from Ward 10. I was surprised at the both, both presentations that the, the elephant in the room was, was never addressed, even peripherally, as to its impact. And that is, of course, safety and security in the city. If St. Louis City were the safest region, the safest area in this entire region, we would not be here trying to figure out how to entice investment into North City, right? Or we would not, not worried about reducing the decline in population and the decline in the tax base. We, we would be thriving. And it is, when I was looking at the proposed expenditures for the RAM settlement money, that was in, in like the very first list that was provided, what, a year ago perhaps now? And it, it did not seem to make the shortlist. And I'm a little bit surprised, in fact shocked, that it did not make the shortlist. Investments in safety and security will pay dividends across every activity that we have here. I, I have, I work with, I'm a former Boeing engineer. I work with young professionals who move into St. Louis City, and they move out of St. Louis City because of the real or imagined lack of safety. The second thing is, in terms of the, the, the increased wages for city workers, I'd like to see more, more facts on just how the total compensation package works in the city of St. Louis compared to other municipalities. I spent about an hour yesterday on the internet trying to do something like this, where I was in particular taking into account the cost of living. So the median, the median income in, in the city of St. Louis is about $64,000, okay? Median salary, $64,000 for city workers, according to the city website. Now, if you were living in Chicago, you would need to earn $80,000 to get the same purchasing power. But you would act, but, and most of the cities, I went to cities in all around, the surrounding states, they're all comparable to the city of St. Louis. And this is just base salary. This does not include the very generous health, vision, dental plans, that, the benefits that the employees have, nor does it include the pension that the employees don't even contribute to. So in terms of the total compensation package, I think it's extremely important for us to convince ourselves that in fact we have a problem with lack of compensation or lower compensation. I'm willing to bet that certainly compared to private workers in the city, that's not a problem. Again, I think the problem is you can't retain people if they don't feel safe. So that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you for coming today. I would just give a reminder that, you know, I think public safety and those things are, you know, were at the top of the list. And I think that some of the things that were discussed today are kind of hinting at that, maybe not in the same way that you're saying. But I think some of the conversations about activating spaces that have been disinvested in, putting actual businesses in them, bringing homeowners by, I think some of those things are a part of our larger public safety conversations. But definitely wouldn't say that today's conversation was meant to be encompassing. We're going to be touching several different topics that were in the portal as the months play out. And we certainly haven't skipped, you know, we can't, we won't skip over public safety. And we even did a resolution to kind of recertify some of the things that were identified in the Citizens Lab Portal. And in that resolution are also some specific things that allude to addressing public safety comprehensively. With that, do you want to respond?
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, we have, the last speaker is Evelyn Eggers.
My apologies, Ms. Eggers.
Thank you very much. My name is Evelyn Eggers.
And do you promise that everything you're about to say is the truth, the whole truth, so help us all? Thank you, and just try to speak into the mic. We just want to make sure folks at home can hear you and just your name and your ward number.
Okay, testing. My name is Evelyn Eggers, I'm in Ward 5. And I've been wondering about this RAM settlement ever since, well, the RAM settlement came about. And the first thing I remember hearing on TV was that they were going to mail out forms for people to submit their ideas. But then that was changed, and then they had to go online to do it. So I, that was kind of an inconvenience for me, since I only used, you know, the internet through the library. But when I was looking through this, this paperwork, it did say something about the kickoff survey, which is ended in October 2023.
I don't think people at home can hear you.
Okay, is that good?
It's better, yes.
Sorry. Okay, so it has the ideas portal. Is that still going on now? Is that, so you can submit it to online or?
Yes.
Okay, now, since I'm here, I think all of the funding ideas is great for the community. And, what was your name, sir? And what Bob was mentioning about the safety, that was critical as well. But I think what's missing here too is that the RAM settlement is for all of St. Louis, all of the St. Louis residents. And I think that all these community ideas seem to ignore the fact, not, not everybody's going to benefit from these larger community ideas. You've already increased the water bill to cover the water expenses. So why should that be included in the RAM settlement? You've already, some years ago, raised the trash collection. And what happens? There's still trucks that break down. And you've already, let's see, what's the other one? Well, the, those are the two main things that I remember. But what I propose and would like the Board of Aldermen and Women to consider is to give all of the voting age residents in the city of St. Louis a portion given to them directly from the RAM settlement. Now, that could be anywhere from $2,000 a person to $1,500 a person, but just something that would be given to the residents themselves that they can use for home improvement, car repairs, or not even that, just personal things that they want to get for themselves or their families. And I think that if it was at 2,000, excuse me, I copied some things from the internet.
That's your three minutes, if you just want to wrap up your thoughts.
I'm sorry?
That's your three minutes, if you just want to wrap up your thoughts.
Well, can I just finish up real quick? Because I listened to this Alderman talk for longer than that.
Yes, ma'am, I said you can wrap up your thoughts, so that means you can wrap, you just finish it out.
Okay, I'm sorry, I just have to get this up. I'm almost finished. If $2,000, for example, was given to each voting age resident, and that would, somehow you'd have to include the homeless in there, or you'd have to go to the shelters or whatever, that that's your, that's something that the Alder, the Board of Aldermen needs to do. But if they were given like $2,000 to each resident, that would come out to $295 million. Subtracting that from the actual settlement, which I'm not sure, was it 280 or 790? Was it, I don't remember what the exact amount of the settlement was.
259. 259.
259, well, I have here, when I went online, it said 790 million.
That was between St. Louis City, St. Louis County, and the RSA. So each got a portion.
Okay, well, then that would have to reduce the amount to each resident. Because what I found online was not, was much higher than that. And I thought they said a much higher amount on the news today. This is how I found out about the meeting. Anyway, that would come to an amount that I, and anything subtracted from that could be used, divided up among the individual neighborhood communities who would know best how to improve their communities, which would be safety, as Bob was talking about, or, or any, any, you know, parks, playgrounds, what have you. And all the other stuff that the city has going on right now, that is something that you've taken care of, like the water, the water situation, the trash situation. I don't, I don't know what happened to all the money that was gathered when the trash collection was increased. You know, what, what happened to all that money? Where did it go? Same thing with, you know, I mean, you want to raise the water bill, I just pay my water bill. It was raised, it was a lot more. I'm retired, I'm, you know, I'm in my 70s. And that's each a little bit increased, even MSD is increasing their amount. So whatever, I know, I just think some of it, a portion should be considered to give each individual resident a voting age. You know, I don't know how you would take care of all that. But you mail out these voting information to people, and I'm sure you can contact shelters to see who's there, who doesn't have a resident or home, or home address, that, you know, that that would really help people individually with their own expenses. And I think it would, and I think it would raise the, it would, it would be a good measure for the residents to know that the city is thinking about them. Okay, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay, thank you for coming. Thank you. All right, and that was our last comment. So I will entertain a motion to continue Committee of the Hold for July 9th at 3:00, here in the Kennedy Room and virtually.
Second.
Can I just do previous? No, we don't have a previous row. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, we will see you July 9th at 3:30 PM.